Has been properly posted. Can we have a roll call, please?
Oh, yes. I am calling the roll tonight. Mr. Sprague.
Here.
Mrs. Sapersky.
Here.
Dr. Khan.
Yeah.
Mrs. Wickowski.
Here.
Mrs. Yank.
Here.
I'm here, and Mrs. Larson is excused.
Thank you. We stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please. Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, I'm looking for a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved. Second.
Motion was made by Mrs. Wickowski, seconded by Mrs. Yank. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. Motion carries. Thank you. Community comment. Any of you three gentlemen wish to comment? I think there's only one that could. Consent agenda. I'm looking for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved. Second.
Motion was made by Mrs. Sapersky, seconded by Mrs. Wickowski. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. Motion carries. Thank you. School board calendar. Franklin National Night Out is Monday, August 5th at the Franklin Public Library at 5:30. And annual meeting of the electors is Wednesday, August 14th at 6:00 PM at the ECC, followed by the regular Board of Education meeting at 7:00 or soon thereafter, after the meeting of the electors ends. District Administrator update. Mrs. Bennon, please.
All right. Welcome to the new year, first meeting of 2425 school year. Also like to welcome Amanda Pound, our new Director of Teaching and Learning, as she's with us for the meeting officially at the table tonight. A couple of fun things, as July comes up, the pace always changes a bit, but really it's a lot of planning going on for the next school year. So right now, the leadership team's really working on shoring up our agenda for our second annual Leadership Summit, which will take place at Forest Park with 100-plus staff members from all of our school improvement teams. We revamped that last year. I know you've heard about that many times. It's really great to have pretty much the same team back at those tables, like taking that work to a deeper step. And the excitement this year, too, is introducing the new coherence plan as part of the first part of their action stepping to that, action steps towards that. Also getting ready for new teacher days, 6th grade and 9th grade transition days, marching band, just a plethora of things where our campuses are in full bloom again as August hits. But before that happens, we round out summer learning next week, Thursday, over at Forest Park. It's been great to have all of our students there on the same schedule, same bus routes, running that this year. Big thank you to our educators, our administrators, and our administrative assistants. We know it's a quick turnaround to welcome everybody back a week after school's out, but it's really been a fun experience and a lot of help from the ECC staff also to help direct traffic, to drop off, be in the four-way over here, and just keeping everything safe. So excited to wrap that up. The high school program goes a little bit longer into July, working with our students that are gaining credits ahead of time or credit recovery. So thank you to all of our staff up there that are working with our students also and documenting their growth. Some other things. Tonight, we have on the agenda, a lot of things that we had in June that we're just looking for action on. But some of the newer things, we'll be talking through our Franklin Forward work as we now talk what are our steps to engage the community in understanding what we're asking for on November 5th at the vote. Also, the Title IX policy, you saw that come through. I know it came quick and fast. That was new regulations that were put through in April. So every district, every legal office is scurrying to work to get policies updated, which is mandated by August 1st. So you'll see that tonight, but then also know that's kind of part one of two of Title IX. There's four or five other policies that will now need adjustments because of those regulations. So they're in the works, but to have those here tonight was too fast of a turnaround for all of us. But at least having the Title IX piece to get approved tonight, hopefully to put us in the right place before August 1st. We'll also have to talk about in the future what training looks like as training board members will also be a part of the new regulations with Title IX. So more to come, but tonight's to get our first piece in place. And as we learn more about training, we'll definitely share that information. There's none that's out there yet, but all of the major organizations are working on putting that together. So great to see everybody tonight. Let me know if you have any questions.
Thank you. All right. Reports, presentations, and other school board business, annual academic standards adoptions. Mrs. Bennon, please.
All right. So we have Amanda here tonight, too, who could probably answer questions if we have any, in addition to what we talked about in June, but this is just annually, you have to adopt the standards for the school year. It has to happen at the first meeting of the new year, which is why we have it in front of us this evening. Nothing major has changed from the year past, as we talked about in June. They're based off of the Wisconsin state standards.
Thank you. So I'm looking for a motion.
So moved. I move that we approve the academic standards as presented.
Second.
I don't know who you want to give that to.
It sounded like Mary. So motion was made by Dr. Beer, seconded by Mrs. Yank. Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. Motion carries. Thank you. Staff handbook, action item. Ms. Lankura, please.
Yeah, we had some discussion at last month's meetings just surrounding the employee handbook for the 2425 school year and made some adjustments and additions at the board's request, so I am happy to answer any other questions.
All right. Does anybody have any questions, comments?
Well, I do want to thank you for including the appendix of the current compensation plan. Thank you.
I move to adopt the employee handbook as presented and delegate the handbook to the administration for management, update, and modification upon the approval of the district administrator and senior leaders with annual review of any such changes by the school board.
Second.
Motion was made by Dr. Beer, seconded by Mrs. Sapersky. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. Motion carries. Thank you. Circ building bids, action item. Mrs. Bennon, Mr. Cromie, Mr. Anderson.
So this was presented to us in June, at the June 19th meeting. Actual bids came in with a total project of about $7.3 million, with a little bit of change on there. Ultimately, a tax levy then reduced based on the 1.825 from last year. If you recall, we budgeted or we levied that last year. We spent about $474,000 of that as part of engineering plans and designing all of that. Using $1.15 million from the Community Transfer, Community Education, Recreation Fund 80 transfer several years ago, applying a million dollars of fund balance with an updated tax levy for this building of $3,799,691. We're also requesting approval for the alternate bid 01, which is the clinic that will be funded out of Fund 46.
Thank you. Mary, you had some questions that were answered. I appreciate the ask when talking about the clinic option. I don't know if you want to talk about that further, Mr. Cromie.
Happy to elaborate a little bit. At this point, we certainly don't have a partner because we have no place to put a partner. Again, part of our bid project was asking both the general contractors that we were considering if there's any change in price to move to March of 2025 versus starting in November of 2024. In both instances, there was a reduction, so ultimately, moving to March of 2025 would be advantageous for us. Given that a start of March of 2025 probably puts us at the end of 2025 for completion of a building, we would still be probably five or six months away from starting that process of vetting a partner to bring on essentially for January 1st of 2026. But ultimately, I've been involved in two clinics. They've both been very successful. It's on Laura and I to market it. But we will have no problem doing that and getting business to, or people to use it in healthcare, right? To use it for the betterment of our healthcare plan overall.
I just appreciate that it's, that it has been done in the past. Proof of concept appears to be there. Obviously, we don't know how it'd work here, but it has worked other places.
I can, sorry to jump in, but I can speak as someone who uses it in a different district, and it is actually quite beneficial and easy to use and makes a lot of sense as a consumer, so I'm on board.
Angie, please.
I just wanted to, going back to the circ building in general, I know at the last meeting there was some conversation about possibly seeing if there could potentially be granting or fundraising around perhaps the more attractive, grantable portions of it, specifically the playground. And I want the public who might be watching this and the rest of the board to know that Andy has already initiated that process and investigations are beginning, so.
Yep. So we've met with Vicki and the Education Foundation, so we have a list of grants to review, like if they'll even work for us.
Yeah.
Ultimately, at this point, if we were to apply for those grants and get them beforehand, we'll be able to reduce the levy portion of this. Some of those grants aren't even eligible till 2025, so we'd be applying for them post, which again, we would just apply to the levy for the 2025-26 school year. So ultimately, it will impact the levy should we get a grant. Or the other option would be to add a component to the playground that isn't currently being budgeted for, so we would weigh both options.
I just think it was a great use of that partnership with the foundation, so thanks for doing that.
Thanks to Vicki. She's the one that scoured the sites for those grant opportunities.
Linda, please.
So are we talking about, you have two separate actions, correct?
Correct. I've asked for two separate action items on it because it is an alternate bid to that.
Okay, so it seems like we're kind of bopping back and forth between them, so I'm not sure which one to talk to first. But I would say regarding the recreation project, it does increase the levy almost $2 million to complete the project as it currently sits. And could we consider use of fund balance for that? It's one time, and we do have a sizable general fund, so is that possible?
It is not. DPI does not allow a general fund transfer to Fund 81. Well, we call it 81, but Fund 80 Recreation.
But we can use, we can raise levy for it, though.
Correct.
Okay. Well, I have to say I'm not going to support it because it's over budget. It's more than we. This project started out as a $2.3 million project. It was always intended to be funded out of fund balance from the recreation fund. Clearly, this is not what, the direction we're going. And I do believe the city has a role in recreation, and I know you can tell me that they gave it to us, but yet, the fact that almost 25% of our valuation is in the city but not in our school district is not being taxed for this. And that, again, is, it's too much. So for that reason, I'm not supporting it. Regarding the clinic, I'm not opposed to a clinic. I just don't feel we need to build our own building. If you check other districts around us, they don't have a separate building for this. They've included in their existing buildings, or they even contract with other providers. And that's what they do. You know, we don't, it's not part of our core mission to run a clinic. Granted, we are going to be paying somebody else, but there's still heavy involvement, particularly if it's in our facility. And the bigger thing is, we're not going to be opening this up for possibly two more years. But yet, we understand that there are huge benefits to this, and we're behind the eight ball. Districts have had clinics for probably up to as much as 10 years. And we are still thinking about it, waiting for a building. We don't have to wait. We could do this this year or next year. And I think there's a lot of change in healthcare. Video visits are huge as far as convenience, or talking about convenience. It's only going to get bigger. I don't want us to, if we get our own facility, we're kind of committing to this brick and mortar facility, and it doesn't leave us the agility or the ability to be flexible. It kind of fixes us to this path, when really, healthcare is moving much faster than that. And we're probably behind. And we're going to get further behind because we want to wait for this building. We don't have to do that. We can go ahead with this without that. So I think it's the wrong thing to do to, and it's levy. It's another $700,000 worth of levy that we don't have to take from our taxpayers this year. They can keep that money. This might be a good year for them to keep it. We just initiated a pretty cutting-edge app to steer our employees to the best care. It's new. Other districts haven't done this. It's pretty, it's new. We haven't even given this a chance to work. And we could delay this for a year to see how that works. So again, please think about these things when you make your decision.
Thank you.
I'll just clear up one point. We are not levying for the clinic. That'll be paid for out of Fund 46, so it's not an addition to the levy.
Is that allowed?
Yes.
It's attached to a recreational building.
So because we bid it separately, we have a separate bid for that particular component. It will be metered separately from a gas, electric, water usage, so we'll be able to take those utilities and completely separate them.
Again, all at additional cost, whereas it could be within our current facility. There's no issues.
So, and I'll just address that. We had talked about that, about putting it in the high schools since we're building, or potentially building a Community Education Recreation Center using the space over there where Brad's office is currently sit, and that cost was more expensive to renovate that building. A lot of it just has to do with supporting walls and removing supporting walls and then finding a place to replace those. So more of an infrastructure rather than the space size itself is the cost to actually move those supporting walls.
All right. Anybody else have any comments, questions?
I have a clarification.
Please.
So, like, where is that in the budget? Is it in these numbers you gave us? Is it in a cost?
So it wouldn't have been in the preliminary budget, because I was waiting to get some direction, but they will certainly be in the annual meeting budget.
Is it in the numbers you provided me today?
The clinic?
Yes.
I didn't provide you anything on Fund 46 today.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. I'm looking for a motion. We should probably handle them one at a time.
Yeah, there's two motions on the board report.
I move to approve the selection of VJS Construction Services as general contractor and the contract for $5,942,123, including a portion of alternate S1 for rubber service only for the Community Education and Recreation Building.
Second.
All right. Motion was made by Mrs. Sapersky, seconded by Dr. Beer. Can we have a voice vote, please?
Sure. I vote aye. Dr. Khan?
Aye.
Mrs. Wickowski?
No.
Mr. Sprague?
Aye.
Mrs. Sapersky?
Aye.
Mrs. Yank?
Aye.
Motion passes 5 to 1.
Thank you.
And then I move to accept alternate bid 01, District Health Clinic with VJS Construction Services as general contractor and the contract for $768,537.
All second.
Motion was made by Mrs. Sapersky, seconded by Mrs. Yank. Also, voice vote, please.
Sure. Mr. Sprague?
Aye.
I vote aye. Mrs. Wickowski?
No.
Dr. Khan?
Aye.
Mrs. Yank?
Aye.
Mrs. Sapersky?
Aye.
Motion passes 5-1.
Thank you. New coherence plan. Mrs. Bennon, please.
Sure. So Dr. Mo was with us in June and talked a lot about the new coherence plan, the new look to it. We've talked a few times this year about the metrics that carry over from the last three-year plan, what's been adjusted for the new one, and the different stakeholder groups that were a part of that. So here to answer any additional questions we have, otherwise looking for forward action. And also thanking you. I've been in a number of districts where there's not always the strategic plan set at the board table that gets all the way to the classroom. I think that's something really strong that's helped to drive a lot of our Franklin Forward and other work. So I also want to thank board members for just being a part of the process of creating this and continuing this for the district.
Angie, please.
I just want to commend your team and Dr. Mo in her absence on putting together what is really a much more user-friendly and data-driven, and I hope to be much more useful coherence plan, so I'm excited to approve this.
Mary, please.
I'm sure this has been answered, but who establishes the metrics of 5-4-3-2-1?
Sure. So the metrics, as you get into the detailed pages, are really divided out among our district-level leaders, depending on whose department it most impacts. So when we're looking at, for instance, we're looking at at-risk, like Leo's department, started to look at those metrics and draw up what that would look like, looking at maybe other districts' data, looking at our own, and looking at where we are and wish to attain to be, and then brought that back through our cabinet level and our building administrators. So I'd say it started with the workforce that's closest to it, those departments, but then was vetted through our entire group.
So this was, the 5-4-3-2-1 was established in Franklin with Franklin input only?
Correct.
Well, I mean, looking at other?
Right. Other districts have similar pieces of metrics.
But this is our creation.
Correct.
Lot of work.
Linda, please.
I just also want to commend the fact that, I mean, Angie, you made the point that this is such an improvement, but the fact that this is the third iteration is, actually goes back to when we started and rooted this in values that have continued. And I want to also remember that it goes back beyond this last improvement.
Yeah, it's continued to be improved, to your point, Linda. I think that's, and we should commend those that were here before us, is what you're saying, I think, but.
Yes, exactly. Thank you. That's what I said.
Agreed. Okay. Anybody else have comments?
I move that we approve the coherence, the 2024-2027 FPS coherence plan as presented.
I second.
All right. Motion was made by Dr. Beer, seconded by Dr. Khan. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. Motion carries. Thank you. Franklin Forward engagements. Mrs. Bennon, would you like to start, please?
Sure. So since the resolution that we had at the June meeting, our team sat down and with Dr. Beer and Mr. Sprague to look at what does it look like to continue to engage our community in learning more about what we're asking for in the November 5th referendum vote, and also making sure that we're getting out information about the survey data and how we've scoped the project differently, listening to the community, where we've taken off-the-country-dale look at this time and put it part, bringing it back to a part of our long-range plan for facilities that Andy Daniels will bring back to our board annually, and scoping that to the 145 million, looking at repairs to the majority of our district on maintenance pieces, but then also the high school work. So tonight, what we have is the progress moving forward. We're kind of doing backwards planning, so three engagement sessions with the community in October to just talk about the scope and the projects of it, answer any questions, offer any clarity that the community may have leading up to that. And in those meetings, we'll have opportunity to tour the high school. Made a lot of positive feedback from that and the couple of times that we were able to do it prior to the community survey, and really getting those dates set so that at upcoming sporting events, performances, any activities we have, we can have a presence of a table with information and further opportunities to learn more and see more, so people can be informed to decide when they're in the booth how they want to support Franklin Public Schools moving forward. There's also some marketing pieces, so we have a couple life-size sabers that are going to be coming as 3D cutouts to stand in all of our schools to kind of hold the information about the referendum and allow a QR code, and some tabletop ones that we've also worked on ordering to be able to hopefully work with some business partners to have out, too, to just see different ways we can reach community outside of people that just have students in our district that are getting our communications on a weekly basis.
Like, another thing you mentioned that I think is worth highlighting is you're going to be sending out a few more frequent Franklin?
Yes.
Franklin Focus?
Focal.
Focal?
Yeah.
So that's great. Your communication plan, I want to reassure you all, is robust and well-thought-out and targeting multiple segments of our community.
Are we going to see the communication plan or are we just talking about it?
Sure, we can share it. I can put it in the, I can email it out afterwards. Right now, it's a list of all the events that we have, and really, the plan is the pieces that we're putting together to have at those. But we also talked about getting a sign-up out so that board members can be present at the table. We'll call it a table. Maybe not everywhere will it be, a physical table. But present at those events to answer questions or hand things out to the community. So that was another piece that we talked about in the meeting is determining which of those events we're going to have a presence at, and then getting a sign-up out for board members to be present if you choose to. We also talked about a date to just try to get out into the community and talk to businesses. So as those tabletop advertisement pieces come in, getting those to board members to get to people that you're connected with in the community that would maybe have those out.
So there's, like you said, Angie, a robust communication plan that you've seen that we haven't seen.
Well, they just had an initial meeting, and those of us, I think I was invited because I have some, I had some, I've been from the very beginning been pretty vocal about, have you thought about this? Have you thought about that? So I've been making a lot of suggestions, and so there was a little bit of brainstorming and sharing of ideas, and yeah. So yes, Linda, that is accurate.
Well, I'm just saying, this was an agenda item, and I didn't see much content here to chew on, so.
If it's not an agenda item, the board doesn't have an opportunity to share ideas of how you would like us to engage or what you want that to look like, so that's really what this opportunity is about. And the conversation that was had on the front end was to start the conversation, to share what we're already thinking about and doing, and taking additional ideas from the board. So that's more what the agenda item idea was about, is here's our next opportunity back together after resolution. Are there other areas that any board members see that they would like the administrative team or anybody on the board to explore for us to continue to put into the plan?
Mary, please.
I mean, I think I've always said I'm happy and willing and would love the opportunity to go to some of these senior residences and whether it's do a presentation or whether talk to the, you know, the concierge there. That's where I feel like my focus would be, is reaching out to people in these large communities where they're going to vote. But I don't know if that's included in this, but sign me up if it is.
Is there a plan to monitor social media at all and comments that are being made on social media?
So Chad is always, has an eye on social media and trying to monitor it that way, but I think that's where we can continue to tap on community members that are aware and talking about the referendum also. Like, it's into a First Amendment right grounds that we have to be careful about, too. I think the best is to gear people towards the FAQ and the website. So all the communication that we've had out, and you'll see in your Friday update this week, has been to get back to the website. We've done some updates on the website to ensure that the new survey data information is at the top, that adjusted, and then that we adjusted the scope of what they ask is, putting the video up for the high school, and then really having that FAQ piece there. So we've had a number of, a few more questions come in just this week with having the push of the QR code out there. So that triggers an email immediately to our team. We work on getting an answer back to that person right away. So I think in the answer to social media, you're kind of always a step behind with social media, so do our best to direct people back to the website and the FAQ or the submit button to put a question into the FAQ will probably be the best way for us to try to do that.
I just, I feel like there's an opportunity there to latch on to people who are already in favor of it and hope that they're speaking positively, but then also, if you do find somebody who is spreading false information or something, you know, how do you correct them? How do you direct them back to?
Yeah, and in my role and anybody in the administration, it's going to be getting them back to the website just so they're fact-based and they can make an informed decision.
And I think we all have to make sure that we look at this handout from Quarles, which was also sent to KYI a couple of weeks ago, with what board, specifically with what board members can do. And just make sure that, just make sure that people have the correct facts and that you're not getting yourself in any hot water in terms of what you, how you, how you talk about the, how you talk about the referendum. But it is important as well to point them to try and get the facts rather than what is conjecture.
And it seems like the bright line, and correct me if I'm wrong, that we are not to cross is we can provide facts, or perhaps better yet, direct them to where facts can be found, but we cannot tell people how to vote.
Well, if you do, you can, you can speak in favor or against as a board member if you state that you're speaking as an individual and not on behalf of the board.
Right.
I mean, just say the district is prohibited from using district funds to promote the referendum. What are they designed for?
To promote voting, yes, for the referendum, but to provide data.
This is information purposes.
We can spend dollars to provide data.
Provide information.
This isn't, okay, so this is not promoting the referendum.
It's not promoting a vote in the referendum. It's promoting being knowledge-based in what you vote.
So FAQs on the website. I haven't looked at them, but can I submit one?
Anybody can submit an FAQ.
I can submit one. Okay, so there's no judging on who's got the better FAQ. You're going to answer them all.
Say, fully trustworthy piece. People submit a question, we're going to answer the question.
Okay. All right.
Yep.
On the FAQ, the common questions about tax levy and the financial impact. Uh, on the FAQ, the common questions about tax levy, among the financial impact, et cetera, et cetera, will be there in detail so that any normal layman's language so that people are able to understand that.
Mm-hmm. Sure, we can, I think we have the information on there already about the impact on their tax bill, if that's what you're asking about. Yeah, we can make sure that's in the FAQ also. I believe it's already on the site because it was on there prior to. We could adjust it for the 145.
Mary, please.
Kind of speaking again to my crowd of people in the, in the senior communities, um, I know my mom would not have the first idea how to use this. Is there, are there any plans for something more postcardy or appealing perhaps to folks that aren't savvy enough to use these?
Mm-hmm. So if we look back at the community engagement survey we did in April, one of the big pieces about communication that came through on that, we asked like where people are getting their information or how they know. Franklin Focal came back at the top, so it's a, excited that it's something that we started in the last year. It was new and it goes to every mailbox in the community and to all the spaces. So that will be a place where we can talk a little bit more about it, have visuals to what the projects look like. Uh, also at any of the events, like when we talk about this table that we're going to have out, we have a printed sheet that shows the scope of the 145 million also. So we did talk about that too, like even though people got really good with QR codes during things that happened around 2020, like not everybody is yet first in them and so, yeah, those are a couple of the ways and our goal is to have three Franklin Focals out to all community members between now and the vote, so uh, the first one will be hitting mailboxes around the beginning of August. Chad and I have been working on that. Uh, the next one we planned for September and those are the bifold ones that we've seen. And then the last one being something a little bit smaller, uh, just reminding people of the vote, similar to what you see in other communities.
Thanks.
All right, anybody else? All right, let's move on to Title IX Policy Update. Mrs. Bennet, please.
All right, so, um, as I kind of said in the front load of the meeting, Title IX, we had new regulations put into, um, effect in April of this school year. Uh, so that's put all school districts, legal counsel kind of in a quick spin to try to turn around policies and make adjustments. So the Title IX policy in front of you tonight uh, is what we need to work to approve before August 1st to meet those regulations. Uh, federal regulations, not ones that we're setting locally. Uh, the language that's in it, if you were to take out our nondiscrimin policy currently, there's a lot of similar language. Um, but then also the new added language with these changes. The reason that it's been put in a 2000 level in our policy book is that we didn't have a space yet that was for multiple groups, stakeholder groups. And the new Title IX pieces work for staff, for students, and for third party. Um, so the best advice from legal was to put it in a space where you can meet all of those stakeholder groups. I know that Linda had asked, well, couldn't we just update all the other ones? We could, and then we could write another one anyways for third party, but the best advice from legal is keep it together. Keep it in a space, so we have that 2000 space. Um, that's been created for this policy.
Still keeping the other two?
And then, like I said earlier, the other, there's four to five other policies that will be coming to the board in August and then again for approval in September that are affected by this change. So this one coming today for approval is to meet the August 1st deadline. The other ones will come in August when there's time to put them together and bring them as a whole to say, here's the other effects on policies because of title changes. And a lot of that has to do with updates on language and the nondiscrimin anti-harassment. Um, and it'll bring forward an anti-bullying piece because that's best to pull out of our other policies and we didn't have it out of there. Uh, because it doesn't have as much to do with law. Uh, so that'll be a separate policy and then also looking at employee, um, where are you going to grab the word before me? Employee, um, not opportunities, but it's listed in the policy. Equal opportunity. Thank you, yes, thank you. So those are the other policies that you're going to see are affected by it. But because they don't have to be here before August 1st, I thought it was best practice for us to follow the first read, second read, bring it in August, bring them together. This policy has to be in place by August 1st. So we're asking for approval tonight, or we'll have to get a special meeting on the calendar before August 1st to, to approve that. Uh, I believe the situation report outlined the major changes that have come into place with the new title pieces. Um, if there's any questions to that, um, do something else.
So are you eliminating the other ones?
No, we're bringing adjusted language in August. It will be adjusted and it will be different. It won't be retired?
It won't be retired, okay.
Correct.
Because it's, it's very, it's like you've lifted words exactly or.
Right, a lot of it is a repeat, right? So it's pulling it together because the other ones existing are for staff and for students. It's pulling language that you see in both of those into this policy and the new language that was brought in, in April of this year and putting it in one policy because it addresses students, staff, and third party.
So is this, um, big issue in our district? I mean, do we have sexual discrimination or out there? Is it?
I, I'm not sure.
I think it's the requirement by the government to have the policy.
Yeah.
It's not, it's not about, you have the issue or not. You have to have the policies irrespective as per the law required. Because if you don't have the policies, then God forbid, if you have issue, then you become a bigger issue then. So that is having a policy. Uh, it gives a guiding framework for the district and everybody to work on.
This is something the federal government
Requires.
requires. They've required it by August 1st for not just us, but for all school districts. And that, that get federal money. So instead, so we're trying to get it passed before the, before the time is up, um, before August 1st.
Right, I get that part. Someone's telling us to do this, but on a bigger policy level, you don't just have the policy because someone told you. The policy should have some meaning. And I'm just asking if, if it's something that occurs in our district. That's all I'm asking, you know? We don't, we're not just doing it just because someone told us to do it. There must, we must find some other value in this other than someone told us to do it, so we're doing it.
I, I guess I would think it's valuable to have it on the books in case something does happen. It doesn't, you know, you have, I don't know, laws against speeding and you hope people don't speed, but then if somebody does speed, you have something that, you know, a way to discipline them or something that way. You know, you have a policy in place for handling that. We have this policy. It's federally mandated. We have it as protection in case something does happen.
So because this is required, because it's been vetted by legal and because we have to continue to have a policy in place to receive federal funds, I move to approve Policy 2100, Nondiscrimination on the Basis of Sex in Education Programs or Activities, AKA Title IX as presented.
Second.
Our motion was made by Dr. Beer, seconded by Mrs. Sapersky. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. All right, uh, board liaison reports. Or school and community engagement reports.
I guess it's about time for us to now think about starting to calendar our meetings with our new liaison assignments, right? Because we are now officially in a new year, so. I have not done that yet, but this is a good reminder to do so.
I suspect, I suspect that they'll reach out.
Okay, I'll wait with bated breath.
Um, in terms of community engagement, we could talk about the parade, which was delightful. Thank you to your family for
ass support and the vehicle. And you've arranged the weather.
Yeah, your daughter did an excellent job driving.
Yes.
Did she really? She drove?
She did.
Oh, impressive.
Yeah, and the parade, there was no real like prolonged, you know, just ground to halt. It, it kept.
It moved almost too fast. It was hard to keep up.
I actually kept up fairly well, so.
I didn't.
Good job.
I usually don't. Usually pretty far behind.
We had candy till the end.
That was good.
No, that was, I think, good thing. We planned in a way that I think we kept the four, four bags.
Yeah, that was a good idea.
Five bags in the front, you know, so I think that was a good.
So when we turned the corner, we had the.
You're in charge, you're in charge from here on out.
Um, yes. I just, I heard a lot of really positive, I know I shared that with you guys before, but just a lot of positive comments from the community as you were going by, like thanks for eating for the schools, you know, yay Franklin schools, like it just seemed like a real positive vibe. And I don't know if that was because we were with like the robotics and the band and the cheer, like it was like all Franklin-centric. I don't know, but there was just a lot of like.
That was a good suggestion on your part to get us, to have the school thing sort of logically arranged together.
It just, it.
If possible, so.
If possible, it works out, but.
Parade organizer.
Which is nice to hear some positivity, you know?
Yeah. Well, thanks for letting me be up north, guys. Appreciate it.
You're welcome.
You could have put your bandit on the side of the car.
All right, um, anybody else? Future agenda items, Ed for Employment update. Perhaps that's coming back. Policy review scheduled for '24, '25 school year. Um, and of course, uh, be the annual meeting next. In August, uh, school board meeting debriefing. Any board member comments? I'm looking for a motion during the meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Motion was made by Mrs. Sapersky, seconded by Dr. Khan. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We are adjourned at 6:41 PM. Thank you, everyone.